Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Ollie, we have an invitation to talk about our priorities.
That's great. Gracious heavenly Father, we are blessed with the presence today, Lord. We just ask you to be with our citizens, with this board, Lord, and give us your wisdom and your discernment. We ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Let the regions divide on the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation of under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time of my call, I would like to call the special meeting of the board, the county board commissioners to order. The issue in front of us is to balance the budget.
This is a workshop.
And, ah, um, so, we have been initiated with information with this, and hopefully we can look at this and figure out what to do. County manager, would you like to start off?
You have two options that have been sent to you, excuse me. Both of the options that were sent to you after the meeting in October took into account all positions that had already been vacant up until that point in time. So those cuts have been made, and associated with those cuts were fight for retirement, hospitalization, and supplemental retirement if that was applicable to that department. There were also adjustments made for the property and liability insurance because we received those final numbers that we also, as you may recall, there were some departments that had a negative, others had a surplus. So we corrected those as well. Excuse me. Also, there were other things that were taken into consideration. And one that's called option one, that budget includes cuts to all of the departments. It also includes cuts to the IT and to the capital line, which actually money is moved from the Fund 11 to Fund 48. And it moves $350,000 from the wastewater project, which is Fund 41, back into Fund 11. Option two, which you have included as well, takes all of the salary and the fight for retirement insurance, all of those into consideration, as well as the property and liability numbers. But it does not make any cuts to the department. So the half percent, the quarter, the one and a half, whatever those percentages were, those additional cuts were not made. That one takes the 400, excuse me, the 454,000, $431,000 from the wastewater project to balance the budget. Now, with that being said, the first option, which has the $350,000 and multiple cuts, does put a very small amount of money back into the general fund. And then the money that has been allocated to the wastewater project would be divided between the two funds, enterprise fund and in the general fund. Option two takes more money from the wastewater project. And after speaking with the LGC about the resolutions that have been passed previously on two occasions about putting the money back into the wastewater, I mean, excuse me, back into the enterprise fund and to the general fund, they recommended that if option two is the solution, that a resolution, and I believe Melissa has drafted a copy that is at your place, a resolution that supersedes all other resolutions to move funds from 41 to the other funds need to be passed with a specific amount going to Fund 11, which is the general fund, and then stating that the balance would go to Fund 61, which is the enterprise fund. And it will not make the enterprise fund ineligible for grants because it is a resolution that was seen as a transalone to this project.
And Madam Chair, if I'm not mistaken, that resolution, the original resolution was September of 2018.
Right. And then there was also one, I did find the other one we had moved. We had completed a amendment in April of 18, and we did the resolution for the $481,000 and some odd dollars from each of the funds in November.
$1.50, now?
That one was $481,000 and some, something from each of the two accounts, each of the two funds.
On Thursday.
That's why she recommended, Susan McCollum, who's from the LGC that spoke last time, recommended that if the option to move all money from wastewater is the option to do, that you specifically state this supersedes all other resolutions.
Those funds are from grants, and they've already been received?
Not all of them. So we can't officially close the entire project out until we resolve that one.
Okay. Are there any questions with County Manager? Or for our financial?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. I will start. To clarify now, I just want to make sure I'm on the right page for once. Budget option, option two, according to the email this morning, response from you, the $13,000 left in the share of salary line. If we, if we go with option two, which is no cuts to any of the departments?
No additional cuts.
No additional cuts.
Right. As I've stated in the email, all the salaries have already been adjusted.
No, when you say all the salaries, can you elaborate on that?
Yes, there were vacancies. Some positions have been vacant since July, and they've just recently been filled. So to balance the budget, if the position was not filled and office was just, say, July to August 1st, or the salary for July was taken out of that salary line item.
So there was three open positions in the county, is that right?
Yes.
That still is taking into consideration those positions being filled at those dates.
Not the deputy.
Not, not with the exception of the deputy, but the other two, from November into January?
Right. One is the social worker and the other is a part-time custodian. The social worker, they did interviews already, and they are waiting actually today to find out if they can proceed with that. And then the part-time custodian was not being hired until at least January of 2020.
All right. Those were all my questions, Madam Chair, for now. Can I, could I continue?
Yes.
All right. I am, I've gone on record, and I'll go on record again, and continue to go on record, I am not cutting the school system budget at all, or public safety. We're having to fix a mistake that happened, and the local government commission that came and spoke to us last month said that we can fix it by using wastewater funds and not cutting our departments anymore to fix this mistake. That's, that's correct. I am correct on that one, right?
Yes.
All right. So we can go with option two, fix the budget and be done with it. But then the other thing, a variable to play, is the grant from the school system.
But that's, we got to get the budget done first.
Well, it's all hand in hand because...
But some other things deserve to, but go ahead.
Do you want to elaborate first, or?
Well, I would like to get the budget done. Can you go on to the next?
Well, the county manager said in the email that...
Right. You have to do the resolution first, and then approve the budget, and then do the SRO. But if you do, if you want to prove them to apply for the SRO, it does have to be included in the budget.
So that's part of it, right. And, and what I'm referring to is the school system has the opportunity to apply for an additional SRO grant, $33,000 of free money the county would get. The county's portion of that would be for the benefits, which totals, according to the county manager, $14,757.58. So this position, which was put in SRO in our elementary schools as part of the grant, would cost the county less than $15,000. We would be 69% funded by the grant. Is that, that's, that's correct, Dr. Williams?
And if I made that salary, because this person is already an employee and they already have uniforms?
And, and that's with the $14,757.58 in the email, right?
That is the salary portion and benefits, right. It does not take into consideration anything that would have to be replenished going forward. But this person is a part-time person, so it would have to be replenished. If you're looking at it from that standpoint, it would have to be replenished going forward anyway.
So theoretically, if the sheriff is hiring a full-time SRO at our schools for our kids' safety and taking a part-time position, position, part-time position, make full-time, then...
No, it's not making the part-time position full-time. It is moving the part-time person into the full-time position that we were moving the money out of the budget for. And then he has a person that he wishes to move into that part-time position.
So basically, you'd have a part-time position that will be open?
Right. Once that person moves.
So there'd be some flat salary until we fill that position?
Right. Because I'm not sure when that person, that would be beginning of the year, possibly.
And, and this grant is due to be submitted by October 25th, as the email states. But in order to do so and give this $33,000 of free money, we have to have a balanced budget.
Correct.
So just to clarify even more, we approve option two today, use the wastewater funds, we can have a balanced budget when we leave here today.
You still have to find that additional $14,758.
I've got that. But if we go with option one, we then have to have a public hearing because we're looking at cutting the school system, which means...
No, you don't have to have an announcement. It's not an advertised public hearing.
I'm saying we have to give the school board an opportunity to present themselves once we've made a final determination per the blog article we received a month or two ago. So we can either go with option two and have a balanced budget today and proceed with the, let the school system proceed with the grant, or if the majority goes with option one, we have another meeting and the school board gets to come present their argument.
No, they can present today also, as long as it's in an advertised meeting that you're talking about, the budget.
They were, they were notified of their option to present today.
Right. We haven't defined the option.
Right. You've not made a decision.
I mean, you're, you're offering to cut $50,000 from the school system. So if we decided as a board to only cut 25, that would probably send them back to the drawing board. So come up with different, right.
That would be for theirs to decide.
But if we go with option two, it's a done deal. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll stop for now.
Okay. Commissioner Jordan, do you want to speak?
Welcome, ma'am. I'm Mr. Johnson. We have an issue with the, it's two of them. And even if we balance the budget with option one or two, now we're going to make up the billion-dollar budget. They say we're short, man. You know, two of them. God, manager. Can you address that?
As they stated, you're not going to make that up in one, two, perhaps even three years. When, if you do option one, there will be a little bit of money going back into the fund balance. If you go with option two, that's when you have to do the resolution. And then you could, and I'm just throwing out a round number to make things simple. You can say you're going to move 500,000 into the general fund, which means the 454,000 goes into the general fund budget, and the balance of that would go into the fund balance. And then the balance of the money in the wastewater project goes into the enterprise fund. Or you can make that money, the amount, I should say, that goes into the general fund, whatever number you so select.
Also, listen, you know, this, as you pointed out, this is not going to be fixed in one year. If you kind of look, and I went back and looked at our Article 44 that we were using to finish paying in all the central schools, and we knew that there were going to be deficits in that starting in 2020, and for the next five years, because we're, or more, that we have to draw out of the general fund. So it's important that we kind of keep putting money in that general fund so that we can pay off the debt service here, because we have a debt service on our old school loan, the DSS building and Central, that we have to come up with each year. And we know we don't have the money in Article 44. It's not going to cover that. So we've got to come up with some money that lives, not only this year, but in the foreseeable future.
Well, looking, looking back to the meeting when the LGC was here and Natalie's comment about we're not going to be able to make ourselves whole overnight, pretty obvious. But in looking at the debt cancellation that's coming up, none of it's immediate or anything like that. But that is our best bet as we retire those debts on those, I think there's three, there's three left. As we retire those debts, I mean, leading up to the retirement of those debts, we need to not be taking on any projects, anything of that nature, we need to be real tight. But as these debt payments go away, that is our best bet to replenish the general fund. Because, you know, we can do, we can do small things and do $1,000 here, $3,000 there. That's not going to, that's not going to make us whole or heal us. So that is our best bet is to watch any special capital spending for quite a few years, really.
And that brings us to another concern that I have. The state is talking about the balance for schools, for school construction, that we will not be in a position to take advantage of that. And that is a big, I mean, for us to do anything else with any of those schools, we need those state balances.
And if I may, I know Commissioner Jones had asked about looking at refinancing two of those loans. We cannot this year, because we've already had to make one payment for both of them. But we were, hence this altar spending, we've not caught. But we are going to look in to see if we would be able to finance, and if it was, if it's worth refinancing some of those because of the length of them for the next budget year.
So, I mean, the budget, I mean, we've got to solve this here for the budget, but we won't have to be on a tight leash for the next so many years. And our general fund is going to, what, 10.5?
We don't have the exact figure right now, but it has to, what we say, I can't go below eight.
So we, you know, there got to be very careful with my spending.
Commissioner Jones, you said, I heard, Natalie, and it was in the email, $14,757.58. And you have a remedy for that? You said you found that, or you had that, or?
Of course, yes, sir. If, if we went with option two, which would correct the budget mistake of the $625,000 today, we would still need to come up with $14,757.58 to fund this SRO opportunity for the school system, which is 69% funded via grant money. I have played around with expenditures in the budget and have found where I think that we can come up with $14,757.58. If we balance the budget based off of the county manager's option number two and take some money from some, from some other line items, which would then give the sheriff opportunity to put another SRO in our school system. Man, I have all those line items if we get to that point, Commissioner Ollie.
So it's not going to be across the board, you're going to pick and choose?
There were some easy spots to pick and choose that would not affect the day-to-day operations. Yes, ma'am. With the exception of one of the cuts.
And of course, going ahead to the next year's budget, you're going to face the same situation?
Well, Commissioner Ollie just said the last thing, that we need to start looking for next year's budget very soon. And I think one email we got was like it was referring to that as possible options and, you know, feasibility for different options going forward next year. And I can elaborate on those lines, you know, at the board's pleasure, when, when all?
Isn't that what Commissioner Owens, he wanted to hear?
Yeah, I got, yeah, that's what I was directing the conversation. I didn't know if that was the proper timing.
I mean, that, yeah, I'm okay with that. There's three positions open in the county right now. There's three positions that's currently open in the county right now. One of them is the sheriff's office position, which we briefly discussed with the funding. The other one is a social worker position, and the other is a part-time custodian position. The social worker position is one of the three. The, we, there was a social worker position cut already this fiscal year. The sheriff's office budget with the cut of the $13,000 is part of option two. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the email stated that there's $7,600 allowed for the part-time custodian position if they were hired in January. So if we do away with the part-time custodian, that brings up $7,600. Doing some research, looking at the planning budget, Lisa Cherry's budget, there are two line items, one for board of adjustment for DM and one for planning board for DM. Looking at the meetings that they have had and looking at prior history of their budget, we could cut $900 from line item 11-4910-172. That's 11-4910-172. That is the board of adjustment for DM. The planning board for DM, which is 11-4910-171, could be deducted $600. And due to the frees for travel that was implemented by the county manager, moving on down to the elections department, line item 11-4170-171, that's $696, which was actually recommended by the county manager in option one, could be deducted. And those three total $2196, which leaves a total of $4,961.58 to find, to help get another SRO in our school system. Going down in Department of Social Services budget, their travel line, 11-5311-311, again, that's 11-5311-311. $1,500 could be deducted from DSS travel line, which leaves $3,461.58. To zero that out to get a new SRO for our school system, customer service line, 11-4130-198, that's 11-4130-198, could be deducted $3461.58, fully funding the SRO position for the sheriff's office and giving us a balanced budget.
The customer service, you said $3,468? And what is that?
That is contracted services, and when you start messing with, just so you're aware, that then affects the salt water and sewer and reimbursement rates. So that's not necessarily a straight balanced budget.
Now, so you're saying that, like DSS is not a dollar per dollar?
Right. 75% of the customer service budget is reimbursed from the solid sewer and water. So whenever you make a cut, then that reduces for, if you increase or decrease the customer service lines, that then changes the reimbursement rate, which then can affect what you believe is a balanced budget.
So the contracted service line cannot be, it's not dollar per dollar?
No, not, no, because like I said, it's 75% reimbursement. Now, to, as a whole, to address your recommended cuts, when I had asked the departments to make cuts, the planning board and the board of adjustment, Lisa had recommended cutting $500 from the board of adjustment. She knew there were several things coming up with the planning board. So she had already made the recommendation out there when they were asked to cut $644 out of her budget, $500 was coming from the board of adjustment. So technically, you're taking $1,500 out of the budget, whereas before they were only being cut $644 out of that budget.
And that is per DM. That is, that is for meeting per DM.
Right.
And there's been two planning board meetings held this fiscal year and only one board of adjustment meeting?
Yes, but I do know that you have, she does have some information that's come up for planning board perhaps. And I believe, I'm not sure about the board of adjustment, like me, having some meetings as well. But when you go to elections, that is the line item that the board of elections had said if they made their cut, that was the line that was going to come out up.
Right.
DSS, $1,500, that is a line that they said they could take $1,500 out of for travel. The customer service, that is not necessarily doable because of what they pay for out of contracted services.
Now, that's taking into consideration with the rate of the war bill, is that correct?
Excuse me?
Taking into consideration with the, with the up charge for the war bill.
No, that comes, that goes in the lines, that goes into Fund 61, which then reimburses this portions of Fund 11. The contracted services line pays for the utility billing, the AR box, the lockbox, robo-call, Edmonds and Logix. So the Logix total, we have since found out, some of that money can be reduced. We've already had to pay some of that, but Edmonds has recently acquired Logix. But again, no matter how much you take out of that line, it's not a straight balanced budget because then you'll, I'll have to do a quick calculation to find out how that affects the reimbursement amount. But if you take out the $3,464, they will not have enough money to pay for the billing at the set cost, which is from Southern Bank, BBNT. We know what those charges are each year, and it swells for Edmonds.
Now, can you elaborate on what you just said about the takeover by the departments? By the company, Logix, I think you said?
Logix was our former financial system and the system that was used by the utilities. Edmonds has now acquired them. We were having to pay Logix in order to have access to the former databases. But because Edmonds has now acquired them, we do not have to pay that additional fee to Logix since they are now part of Edmonds.
Do you know what that additional fee is, or was?
It was for that department, $3,700. But as I said, we've already had to make payments out of that $3,700 because we had to pay two months' worth.
I have a question on the, of course, it's gone away. That's gone away. But each department is appropriated a certain amount for that.
Right. They use Logix, right. Or they, you said, that's correct.
So since we're going to be saving money, you said you could put it in and see what, out of that? out of that thirty-four sixty-one fifty-eight I would recommend it would take or could be taken, you're saying, but since you said some about thirty-seven hundred?
Right, you can't take all of that from that line because then they would not have enough to pay for the true Edmonds deal, the true cost of BBNT and Southern Bank and the utility billing cost.
So how much had been, was in the budget?
I've got to pull up what we've spent for that Logix deal, but...
So how much has been recommended or approved to be spent on that one company that we're not, now not going to have to spend in total?
That was also money in the admin line for Logix as well because we, for finance, and that was... And actually, in option two, that, that money has already been taken out.
The Logix money?
Yes.
I thought option two was using the wastewater and salary and...
There were others cuts that were made as well, so let me pull that one back up.
Madam, can I speak while you do a minute?
Yes.
So I'm looking under administration and finance, one-one-four-one-two-zero dash one-nine-eight. It says contracted services and software?
Yes.
And I see thirty thousand and even six dollars.
Right, because I had, I went back and I added in the cost of Edmonds because previously, Edmonds had been allocated to Forty-Eight Fund for the IT and software line that had been created. But after talking with Susan McCollum and Sharon Edmonds, and they recommended we move it back so that into the fund line, it could be alloc, so the money could be, so the portions of that could be reimbursed from either solid waste or the wastewater, or both, for water or both, as the case might be for finance.
Logix was thirty-seven oh eight.
Right, it was four thousand, lower than four thousand, it's four thousand eighty for finance.
How about you?
Yes.
I'd like to ask together, Madam, we have tasked you with overseeing the operation of the county. We have tasked you with finding out what options we have to tab this balance to budget and recover from the budget that were, that we used, that did we use. What is your opinion of the best option to take?
My recommendation would be option one, as that would, um, as it would go ahead and make cuts, prepare the county departments for cuts that would be moved for next year.
And that would work more every year as well.
Correct.
And everyone, every department would be affected, it would not be picking and choosing.
Correct.
The county manager is in charge of the day-to-day operations and should be aware of what the needs of the departments are and to be, and communication would have to be every day. So I think that we should allow the county manager to give to everybody and for that, we're accountable for how this works out.
Well, we also have to have a balanced budget, Commissioner Jordan, and that's why we're here today. Because somebody's got to be accountable for not having a balanced budget, put this in the first place.
And a realization, she's given us two options after studying that as a county manager. So one option is as good as another, the two options on the table.
But she said that the option one would be the better option. It already does, I think.
Right, my preference would be go ahead and make cuts to the departments so that they can prepare for next years. That, that would be my recommendation because we do know that they cannot continue to be funded at the levels next year as they are this year with all of the information that we know is coming down the pipe for salary increases from the third-year implementation and for the information we have for insurance as well.
To piggyback off Commissioner Jordan, Madam County Manager, what about the fifteen thousand dollars approximately for the SRO position? What's your recommendation on that?
I know I have discussed it with Mr. Ryan and with Dr. Williams, and I, they know the situation that we are in. And they have said whatever the board motion, or whatever the direction the board decides to choose, that they would be willing to go with that. So if there's not money for that position, they said they would understand it.
So give them their recommendation?
No, and I, I will, I have had a few citizens who know about this ask, is an SRO needed at elementary schools? And I told them that was a question that would be better addressed at the school board.
Are we able to call someone up to speak during this, Madam?
Excuse me?
Are we able to call the department head up during this workshop?
That, yes.
Just the department head?
What do you think, guys?
Since we're, I mean, we're looking at affecting their budget, so...
Okay, if they're willing to...
If they, then give them the option.
Sharon, do you mind coming up, speaking on this SRO opportunity? Sorry to put you on the spot. Fourteen thousand, seven fifty-seven, fifty-eight is the county's portion of that. Hold on, let the mic get on first. And the statement was made, well, the question or statement just made is, I believe that some citizens have asked if their SRO would be really needed at elementary schools.
Absolutely, it's a wonderful opportunity for us, and I just, I hate to, I hate to see it pass us by. And the sheriff's office, we're willing to go in and cut some more. You know, for whatever we need to do, the cutting can make this happen. We're willing to do that, but I just hate to see it, because what I'm afraid of is we might not get this grant again, I'm afraid they'll give it to another county, and we might, we might not even be looked at again. So we're willing to work, we're willing to do, Chief and I have already looked at places that we can cut more. But I thought we had a figure if you needed thirty-four hundred and some change at one time, but now you're saying fourteen?
And, and to be clear, and I think Dr. Williams can take his head, and he probably can't, this is the second grant on top of what we already have, is funding one SRO of thirty-three thousand. This is thirty-three thousand next year also. It's not a sliding scale where it's thirty-three this year if we're approved, twenty-five next year, and it strategically drops where we're having to come up with more. If we're approved, it's thirty-three thousand, which is what has been since fewer the SRO, if I'm correct. Thanks, Sharon.
I just, again, I hate to see this pass us by.
Me too, Sharon.
We're seeing more and more situations in the elementary schools and to have a SRO there, it's, it's a win-win for everybody.
I know, um, option one, that does put some money into the general fund. If, and we were going to say, move three hundred fifty thousand from the general fund, I mean, from the...
From the wastewater project?
If we would increase that to cover the SRO, could we then do the cross-board cuts? I'm just...
Yeah, general statement.
Just a general statement, when we put, that puts money in the general fund. I do think it's important that we tell, show the LGC that we are serious about this situation and that we are trying to build, and what we know, next year is a tight year. You know, got to start from that point. And not, in that way, we will not, we can have the SRO, but keep the cuts as they are and put money into the general fund.
Well, with option two, how much does that put back into the general fund?
You would have to do the resolution.
But that doesn't... Has no, none in the general fund.
No, ma'am. Option two is where you have to do the resolution. And then when you do the resolution, you would decide how much goes into the general fund. Being conservative, I think we've said eight hundred thousand based on the numbers that could possibly be left over from the wastewater project.
Is that the four fifty-four, four thirty-one number?
Option, yes.
That would balance, I think, is what it would take from wastewater money?
Yes, but that, but then you have to do that resolution. And the resolution has to say, we're going to put X amount back into the general fund, and the balance would go into the enterprise fund. So you can make that X amount...
Any number.
What it up to?
So, so essentially, with that resolution, that would get back into the general fund?
Correct, without cuts, which budget, which departments will have to have for next year.
What, what, that would be without departmental cuts?
Without the quarter percent, half percent, one and a half percent, not counting the, not counting the cuts that's already been made to the salaries to adjust for vacancies.
So if you're saying it's eight hundred approximately, if that was a motion made to move six hundred back, four fifty-four would go from the wastewater to balance the budget, and the difference in that is six hundred to go back?
Into the general fund.
So you'd still put money back in?
Correct. And if you're, if the commissioners in a course are saying they want, then you still have to find the fourteen thousand dollars, whether it would be through cuts or just say in that fourteen thousand from that?
Right.
From the wastewater.
Or that would be fourteen, seven fifty-eight?
Right.
Or a budget amendment, that, probably can do that prior. Commissioner Jones, when you were just quizzing county manager on the numbers there, you were referencing option two at the same time?
Yes, sir, I'm a hundred percent behind option two, no cuts to the school system. The departments for this, for their budget not to be cut to balance the budget. Unfortunately, there would be some small cuts to help fund this SRO position.
So can I hear that again? If we go with option two, you're telling me how much money would be added back to the general fund?
That depends on what amount?
I mean, what we decide, but what would be available?
Commissioner Jones said if he recommended moving six hundred thousand from the wastewater project.
And this is a one-time thing that can happen, correct?
Right, correct. So if he recommends moving that?
Six hundred.
Right, and then you need the five fifty-four, four thirty-one to actually balance the budget.
Was that, you said five fifty-four then, or four thirty-one?
I'm sorry, four hundred fifty-four, yes.
Four fifty-four, five thirty-one.
Four thirty-one. That would put a hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars into the general fund.
Say that number one more time.
A hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine, back into the general fund, fund balance, which is Fund Eleven.
And how much would that leave with wastewater balance?
Whatever the balance would be, so if it was eight hundred thousand, then that would leave two hundred, the balance would go into, into the wastewater, which would be the two hundred thousand.
So that number is to be determined because we don't say the balance?
Right.
Because we don't know, there's still deals outstanding.
Well, we're still waiting on reimbursement from that one that we're, we've got to provide some more documentation. We're still trying to collect.
And that, just to reiterate the conversation, that does not cut the school any dollars and helps us with the SRO. And by the way, the answer to, do we need a SRO? You need, there's an ugly time when you definitely need a SRO, so you don't wait for that ugly time. You need a SRO.
But it does not address the fourteen thousand that is needed unless you make cuts or allocate that additional money from the wastewater project.
Well, I instead of picking and choosing, I would allocate from the, the principal.
And to be clear, Madam Chair, with the exception of one, that being the part-time custodian position, this money's most likely going to be left there at the end of the year, going back into it because of money not being spent for meetings or for travel due to the budget or the freeze implemented by the county manager. So we'd either move it now or it's going to be there next June. That's why I did my research, as the county manager stated in her email this morning, to come up with the fourteen thousand, seven fifty-seven, fifty-eight.
I think somebody else we need to hear from is Mr. Hedges, because of the effects. When we took, when we first made the suggestion, I mean, when we took out about wastewater, they were, because the reimbursement was going to be fifty-fifty, have to come back to the county and have to, to the water fund. How does this impact you?
And how is wastewater different than the water?
The wastewater project is just the wastewater project. That includes the new spray field that was built to accommodate merchants commerce. The water fund, which is part of Fund Sixty-One, is the actual water that people use and pay to build on at the sewer that is part of commerce, the school system, and DOC and DOT, the community center, Europe, Place of Business, the Gates House, and the library.
So does it affect Timmy Moore's or Tiffany, in terms of wastewater?
I, I can back, back up a little bit, and I can explain this because you might not understand. The wastewater, this whole wastewater project was bottom line, never to make money for the enterprise. It was bottom line to create jobs, tax base, and tax revenue for the general fund. Well, the money fronted for this project was split fifty-fifty between enterprise fund and general fund. Well, with the understanding that when it come back, we had to front the money when the grants were closed out, it was split back fifty-fifty. Keep in mind that water sales and revenue is what's going to manage and maintain this wastewater system, not sewer sales. We don't have enough connections, we don't have big enough system to be able to maintain itself and sustain, just, just to break even. And that was, that was known from the gate. The purpose of that was our hand before us because we had to keep wastewater for the schools, the high school and the middle school. So in order to make some kind of a positive out of it, that's why it was expanded to at least try to recoup some cost. But if you look at profits made per year versus O and M cost, it'll never make the profits to sustain. So water sales and water revenue is what's maintaining and operating wastewater to keep primarily sewer available for the schools. So with, with that being said, you asked how it's going to affect me. Option one versus option two that y'all have on the table? Option one versus option two that y'all have on the table? Option one is going to get you out of your pinch and sets you, like LGC said, over the next several years to be on a tighter budget and will rebuild your general, general fund faster versus option two is going to put a two hundred thousand dollar plug in there right now and then next year you have no revenue coming in for general fund. That's a one-time fix versus going ahead and making a plan to strategically build your general fund back up. And all in the same sense hinder the enterprise fund very good. We drained half of, just about half of the enterprise fund balance fronting towards this wastewater project with anticipations of getting it back for the next capital project that y'all recommend to go towards and move towards AMRs for the county.
So we have been moving money from the enterprise fund?
For the wastewater project.
For the wastewater, Hedges, where, but we've been moving?
It, it's for the wastewater, which is an enterprise-funded event or project.
Still trying to understand the answer. So we have moved it from the enterprise fund and we're taking it out of the enterprise fund?
We, we have spent out of enterprise fund for doing the spray field, doing the lift station, doing the force veins for the wastewater project to put the new system on wheel length. And the county fund balance has split that fifty-fifty of enterprise. So all the upfront costs were split fifty-fifty between enterprise and the county's fund balance with anticipation when the grants were closed out, those monies will be split fifty-fifty coming back to replenish the money spent.
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion.
Okay, but, Mr. Jordan, what's your motion?
My motion is that we use the recommended option by County Manager, which is option one, to balance the budget and we restore the general fund to acceptable levels of the LGC and the County Manager accountable for making that happen. In other words, that's a, a direction, uh, order request, and that's why I want to do this, is to ensure that this happens, and happens as we have discussed it.
Okay, so your, your motion is to recommend that we go with option one?
The option one, yes.
Okay.
With the County Manager being accountable for, uh, ensuring that the general fund and replenished balance.
Okay. Uh, motion has been made, is our second. For a point of discussion, I'll second it.
Discussion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, County Manager, what does option one put back in general funds?
Well, as I've said, if there's eight hundred thousand and you're going to divide it between the two, then that puts fifty thousand dollars back. Now, um, Susan and I did not discuss, you know, a resolution, the, changing it for option one because the three fifty is below the five hundred thousand dollars that the resolution that was passed in September and it's below the resolution amount that was passed in November. Um, so we did not talk about if we need, if we needed to do one for that one because the intent was to divide evenly at that time, which is what both of those resolutions that you passed stated.
So it could be more than three fifty?
No, the three fifty is what's going back into balance of the budget would be fifty thousand dollars. If the, if it's eight hundred thousand dollars that's left, once the final grant is reimbursed, it would be four hundred thousand of the enterprise, four hundred thousand of general, of which three hundred fifty thousand is going into balance of this budget.
There's some things about option one that I don't particularly like, particularly want to do, you know, um, I get back to Commissioner Jones, you know, when he was trying to find the fourteen thousand dollars, um, and I'm going to rehash them, but I'll just say, you know, a general comment that he suggested some things that, um, that I would be in favor of, some, a couple of them I heard for the first time, a couple of them I, he'd already shared with me. And, um, and they're not in option one or option two, but it's some changes. And one, I mean, just small numbers, um, the per diem things, I, I mean, we should have already, I think we should have probably already adjusted for those.
Well, I respectfully disagree because the departments, when they request, when they sent me their cuts, some of those cuts are some of those cuts that he recommended. That, no, they were not already there. They are the, for example, as I said, for planning, she was already going to make cuts to one of those lines. DSS, when their cut was requested for the, over their ten thousand dollars, they were going to reduce travel by fifteen hundred. So the departments had already taken it upon themselves to identify where their cuts were going to come, some of which were ones that Commissioner Jones made today.
Mr., if I may, Commissioner Jones, to, to be clear, the fourteen, seven fifty-seven, fifty-eight was asked of, um, by the county manager via email to find it is for the funding of the SRO position.
Yeah, and that's right.
So that part of, right, so.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm with you, but you did look into these funds, some of those dollars, I understand there's some overlapping, which reduces the number of that, John.
The topic on the table, though, is the budget, not the SRO position right now.
Well, I, I understand, but tomorrow's twenty...
Today's twenty-third.
Tomorrow's twenty-fourth.
The day's twenty-third.
And, and the day after the twenty-fourth is the twenty-fifth. And that's the, the grant deadline. And, um, is the grant already prepared and ready to go if everything went the right direction?
That would be a question for Dr. Williams, checking the schedule.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, I, during our last commissioners meeting, I think I was pretty positive on the fact I wanted none department cuts from any department because we'd already asked them slim, we, I don't know how many budget hearings we had prior to establishing a balanced budget, which then we realized was not balanced. And, uh, then we, we asked County Manager, and bless the heart, for finding other options because we didn't have any other options during the last commissioners meeting. Now we have two options. And I regard both options as options that the county manager relied on, but she would not have put them on the table to us. And as I looked at them, option two is no department cuts and there is monies available to take care of the situation. We realized, and Madam Chairman brought up the bond issue, uh, that did not go very well last time we had that against County, our citizens did not look favorably towards the bond. But remember, they voted it down.
But not with a local bond, this, what I'm talking about, John certainly is talking about state, that's the system, it will not go to the voter referendum.
And I'm talking about Gates County.
But I mean, it would be available to Gates County.
Right, but I'm talking about our citizens in Gates County.
Oh, I see.
And what they, what they look for, appreciate the addition. However, uh, that's what I see within our citizens and what I've been hearing, uh, whether or not what I do and what I say here is because of what I hear from the folks either in the audience here or otherwise who come to the house, uh, that meet me in the yard. So there was never an option after County Manager sent us the two options, other than option two in my mind and in my heart and following what our citizens want and what they have put in front of me. I certainly know that we should not, uh, don't look. Education is dear in my heart, has been in my family for years and years. Don't let them cut the schools. Certainly we should look after the safety of our students and of our kids who are in the school. So option two is where I stand and will stand.
Well, I hope you don't think I'm opposed to schools.
I hope not.
I am not opposed to schools, I'm not opposed to the SRO. I just think that we should all share the burden on each department and not pick and choose and, uh, you know, this problem is going to be with us next year and, you know, we're not going to have this fund coming in that we can use, I, this year.
And I'm glad you brought that up because we certainly, what has happened, the right of this process is we have become aware of what we're missing and how do we make it up? How do we do that in our own lives? And I say now that we're aware of it, when cuts come available, County Manager advises us, those cuts, those options, those positions might not be fit within the next year. So every year we'd be looking to how we're going to make it up. We don't feel one, if somebody has to wear two shoes, they just have to wear two shoes until we get back to where we are. So, option two.
Yes, I'm with Commissioner Jordan, talked about a few weeks ago during the budget about wearing different hats. I believe, I will quote you verbatim, Commissioner Jordan, um, but I, to piggyback off of that, but just to, I, I've stated my option, I'm a hundred percent for option two, but just to clarify, if option one is passed, it'll be a forty-three thousand dollar cut for the school system and fifteen thousand dollars for the sheriff's office. So I am for the school system, I am not for cutting them. Um, I appreciate everything that both of those departments do, I appreciate what every department does. It's not their fault that we're here today. They shouldn't have to help balance the budget by nickel and diamond themselves from us. There's an option that the local government commission that was just here at the last meeting, um, has said is okay. At the last commissioners meeting, we talked about this, just like we talked about the budget and workshops, what you guys said. Um, at last commissioners meeting, I'm the one that asked that this topic be tabled until our November meeting because it's a, it's a tough decision. It's a tough decision to fix a mistake and realize you got a mistake that's got to be fixed. We can't have a unbalanced budget. You can't spend more than you have. And that's where we're at today. And that's, that's pretty financial counseling, common sense. So we have an opportunity to fix it today and it's now October. We've got till next June to start hashing it out, what we can do to cut. And I like one of the comments, I might like two of them, but, 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 you know, going forward, um, what we've got to be thinking about going forward because I don't want another taxing bridge next year. And unfortunately, this mistake has put us in a bad situation, but with us being smart and being smart with our money and, and planning now for the future, maybe we can, we've got plenty of time to address it. So that's why I'm all for option two and then I'm also for making those cuts to fully fund the SRO position and not cutting forty-three thousand dollars from our school system and fifteen thousand and seventy-six from the sheriff's office.
About you, I'd just like to say that, uh, we have, we tasked County Manager to look into what the options are. What the options are. And, uh, I would assume and would hope and know that the County Manager talked to the department and has, has given cuts that she has recommended. I'm pretty sure that the school system, Sheriff's Department, have given her some kind of a thumbs up that this is, that they can probably deal with. And, uh, you know, we as a board, we also work day-to-day in the operations of the county. That's why we hired County Manager, and we have to hold our accountable for making sure that we accomplish what we need to accomplish. And I think since we are now to, to vote on this thing, I think we need to look at, give our opportunity to, to get this thing right and, uh, not try to go it on our own and possibly, uh, make it worse. So I think, uh, not that I feel that option one is so much better than option two, but how County Manager has recommended it, that you need to stand behind it and to hold our accountable for it. And we, that's why I say, when you don't want your, uh...
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Jordan, I certainly agree with you, but I also feel like that option two, we certainly hold County Manager accountable for that as well, because these are her two options. So that option just is accountable as option one.
Yeah, but, but she recommends option one. That's why we asked her to, uh, tell us what, what did she feel with the best option? She gave us two, but if we go against her, her option, then it's on us, we were ready to make this stuff as a board. If we don't get everything back the way that you're being.
County Manager, Commissioner is always on us.
Well, it's going to be always. Get what we got, County Manager, follow her. Oh, what she make it?
Let the book stop some plus, though.
I think you're right. Madam Chair, I'll call the votes.
Okay. A motion has been made, the proper second, they've done called the vote. I think we'll poll the board, um, since it's a court of vote individually, um, starting at the end. Commissioner Jones?
Will you, will you, um...
So would you like to be...
Would you, thank you for whatever I was trying to say, listen. I think it was to go with option one, the basis is just of...
Basically, County Manager recommendation, we go with option one and I hope the County Manager accountable for, uh, if I, if, uh, properly, uh, properly, uh, they, and also the general fund be, be a, be a first.
You want me to start, Mr.?
Option one.
Basically, we're voting for against option one, as the motion said.
Right. He, Commissioner Jordan has proposed that we go with option one, which is to catch the right budget, put money into general fund, thirty thousand, um, and help us out. Option.
I'll vote no, Madam Chair, option one.
Commissioner Freeman?
No.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan, I mean, Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry.
You're forgiven. No.
Commissioner Hopple votes yes. So it fails two to three.
Can I make a motion, Madam Chair?
You can make a motion.
I make a motion that we proceed with option two as presented by the county manager. Is my first motion, now that is going to take, it's, do I, what I need to make as part of my motion that we pass a resolution or...
You have to pass the resol, they said you have to pass the resolution before you pass the budget.
So I make a motion that we pass a resolution.
Right, because that... Right, because I did question to make sure-
The order in the end of the motion.
Yes. Okay, and the resolution, do we have copy of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that exhibit eight? I've got exhibit eight.
Yes, exhibit eight. Sounds like we're in a court of law.
Can you take a five-minute tip, Madam Chair?
Yes. We'll take a five-minute recess. Okay, this time we'll come back to order. I believe Commissioner James had a motion on, I mean, a resolution.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, and prepare a resolution. I'm looking at exhibit eight of a previous wastewater expansion project change that was made, as there has been a couple of them that was made. But I am making a resolution and will state for the record, this declaration of official intent should supersede all previous declarations of intent to reimburse expenditures for the wastewater expansion project that have been passed by the current and previous Gates County Board of Commissioners. With that being said, I make the recommendation that we pass a resolution that the county reimburse itself four hundred sixty-nine thousand one hundred eighty-nine dollars to the general fund, fund eleven, and the balance to the enterprise fund, fund forty-one.
And that's a motion to discuss it, you have to have a second.
Okay, a second.
That will not put any money into the general fund, I mean, into the general fund balance. That is the exact amount that is needed if you include the fourteen thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars.
That was with the budget amendment.
Oops, sorry. I apologize. Can I amend my motion, Madam Chair?
Well, how about you just start over?
How about I all start?
Draw it.
Well, I'll withdraw it. Y'all okay with that, aren't you? That we still supersede all previous declarations of intent to reimburse expenditures, that we put six hundred thousand into the general fund and the balance into the enterprise fund.
A motion has been made that we put six hundred thousand to the general fund, general fund, and that's fund eleven, and to the enterprise, the remainder of balance to the enterprise fund, which is fund forty-one. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Motion's been made, the party is second, and proper discussion.
Madam Chair, that, just to be stated, I think, be proper, that motion is made in the form of a resolution.
Yes, sir. Commissioner?
Where else would it come from?
It's from the reimbursements from the grants that we received for the wastewater project.
And we're going to put eight general funds.
What, oh, six hundred thousand we're going to put in the general fund and the rebalance goes back to the enterprise fund. Okay, is everybody clear on the motion? At this time, I think, let's have just a show of hands, all those in favor say aye. Raise their right hand. Yeah, okay. And listen, Jordan, you say aye.
Are you raising your hand?
Okay, okay. So it passes four to one. Okay. So that is the first item that we have to attend with. Next is to make a proposal by balancing the budget.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve- we approve the budget with option two presented by the County Manager. And in doing so, we take the four fifty-four, four thirty-one from wastewater to balance the budget. Also, as part of that, the County Manager used the line items previous presented, you want to elaborate on what you stated, well, I think now as part of my motion, what I need to, was the proper way to do that, County Manager, for the fourteen seven fifty-seven fifty-eight needed as part of this?
You can either, the lines I took were not exactly the numbers that you provided.
But the line items were the same.
Yes.
Would you, would you state those as part of my motion or value two?
The line items, they were the part-time, the part-time salary, rebuilding grounds, for custodial position, election for member tribal, DSS tribal, customer service contract line, administrative services contract, as well as funds from the planning board, board of adjustment line, and the planning board line.
And you came up with four?
And then there's a small amount that would come from the administrative professional services line.
For the seven, fourteen seven fifty-seven and fifty-eight cents?
Right, once the reimbursements are taken into consideration for those lines as well.
And that is my motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, a motion's been presented, do I have a second?
A second, Madam Chair.
Motion's been made, the party is second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I think we should still add what Commissioner Jordan referred to as, County Manager still have a responsible option two as well as option one.
So you want to add, to make-
Yes, ma'am.
-County Manager accountable?
Accountable, yes.
Is that a amendment you want to add?
No, it's just Commissioner Jordan's, his motion. County Manager be held accountable for option one. And I say the same thing for option two.
I had that County Manager was the one that recommended option one or option two. And that was the reason I said I hold her accountable. But if she has not recommended option two, I think we're taking it one for one, it one itself, to enjoy it, this is much more work. Okay, one LTC is very tough, right?
Okay. I just, I just kind of would like instead of doing these separate cuts, and of course that's not in a motion, to just have, make a budget amendment and put it to the SRO from the, um-
Getting away from our vote.
I know, but anyway. Any all comments? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote, and once again, we will poll the board, starting with Commissioner James.
Uh.
Commissioner Freeman.
Uh.
Commissioner Jordan.
No.
I know, I was, Commissioner Owens?
Yes.
I didn't want to make sense, so, no, Commissioner Harper, no. And I'm fine with it, I just make it simple, we're just nipping down what we could have done much cleaner. Okay, is nothing else to be brought before us tonight?
Number three, the email?
You just need, you would just need to officially tell them they can go ahead and submit that.
Do they even vote or motion to proceed?
In the past, they, it's not been brought before us, but I felt today like it would probably be better if you all agreed and voted on it.
Madam Chair, I'll make one more motion, if that's okay, that we let the school system know that it's okay to hit submit on the thirty-three thousand dollar grant with the school, with the county, picking up the additional fourteen thousand seven fifty-seven fifty-eight for an additional SRO for our school system and our elementary schools, but I can't say it.
And I'll second that. Any, okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, no further movements, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
A motion? Second up, motion.
Okay, I don't think we have discussion, all those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.